Last one in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice is going to lead us in our indication tonight.
Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father, God, we love you, and we just thank you for today, and we thank you for the many blessings you give. God, we thank you for the protection you've given us this winter, and we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in our country. God, we ask tonight that you be with the community leaders as they make decisions. We also ask that you be with the first responders, Lord, as they continue to serve. We love you, in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Anita Lowery.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmord.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Kira Hungate.
Here.
Don Rollins is absent. City Attorney, City Clerk, and Mayor.
Joe.
Sorry, Joe. Send over there, quiet. All right.
Just comforting to have you here.
All right. First item on the agenda is the adoption of our agenda. See any changes that need to be made there? No, that would be a motion.
Oh, no, a motion to adopt the agenda. I'm sorry.
Motion second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from January 9th, 2018. Are there any changes that need to be made to those?
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. So next, we have our public forum, in which we welcome anyone from the public to come and speak. We do a few minutes per speaker, and we will not take any action tonight on anything that happens in the public comment section, but we do welcome any comments or questions you have for the council. One more. All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Our business reports. Planning Commission doesn't have anyone representing them. Our Planning Commission is once again looking for members. I don't know what it is, but somebody's running them off. But they did have a very productive meeting at their last meeting. They are diligently working to get some stuff in place for lot splits, for conditional use permits, for zoning. Christie was at the last meeting to assist and help with what the city currently has handed out to a potential developer or builder, or anyone that comes in with wanting a lot split, or any kind of information, so that the Planning Commission can see what the city is working with currently. I would encourage all of you guys to attend a meeting if you can. They have a major project ahead of them to get that stuff in better order.
How many positions do we have open?
We have three open currently.
Who's on?
There's seven. There's seven positions. I think there's seven different books that have been handed out to them. I think every one of them has a different version. So, all right, we'll move on. John, you want to get the library report?
Not a whole lot to report to you tonight. We'll talk about the chocolate buffet this past Saturday. Did very well. Friends did very well, raising $1,500 in about an hour and a half, so that's not bad. Somebody got to go over there. It looks like a lot of fun. We're still trying to promote, get the word out about some GED classes and computer employment training. At the, you know, we could offer at the library if we get enough interest, basically, if we get enough people to sign up or to commit to it. So we probably haven't gotten the word out enough, but if you can help, or have any ideas on how we can get the word out, because it is a great opportunity for us to offer something here that's not currently offered through the Adult Education Center. I'm a West Fork resident who teaches for young moms to offer a class in West Fork. And so, and I know there are people in this area who would be helped with the GED by getting their GED, or various times I've had people tell us that they need help with their computer skills, and people applying for employment, need help with resumes and things. So those are the kinds of things that would be offered. And so, you know, it's hard to get something like that started. But what I'm hoping is, you know, at least to get enough people to get that off the ground, and then I think it will gain some momentum if we go along. So, and then we have tonight two people from our library board, Paula Cuddly, Brian Nance, Susan McCallum. And we're going to talk about how we're managing with our expansion project. We had a final meeting with Architect Brett Park today, and I think it's been a very good process. We've really been impressed with Brett Park and their work, and I think there's been a really good interaction and interplay between us in terms of getting what we hoped for, and not getting everything we wanted, but getting enough of what we wanted, that I think it'll be a very, it'll be a very good, responsible project. So, any questions? You have your pile, and then...
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Tell us your name.
My name is Paula Cuddly. That's C-A-U-D-L-E. I just spell it for everybody. First off, I want to thank you all for what you do, what you listen to, and all that kind of stuff. You haven't exactly had a really easy year this year. Some stuff you had to really make, you know, what you thought, know and stand on it, and I appreciate that. It's not, not easy. I was kidding the heat the other day, and kind of kidding, but not really. The two minutes that you get, you'll never take any action on it. You don't ever know if you discuss it, if you say kiss my foot, you know, or what. So I told him, I said, "I want to get on the agenda because I want to at least note that, you know, I've had a chance for it to be discussed." What I want to tell you about is our library expansion. We finished it today. I've got a picture here. I'm going to pass around. Well, if I get it undone, we'll pass it around. This is the roadside. Yeah. This is going to be next to Library Hall. I'll let you look at it. I've got any question. We started out wanting to have a liaison between us and the council, and we actually started out with Anita, but I don't understand how she has to work. So we ended up with Misty as a volunteer, and she did a good job. The one thing that we did put in this was a meeting room. We've had a lot of people that have asked for it. There's some of us that did not think that it was necessary, but we cut it down from 27, 21 to 21, 21, and that gave us a little bit more room. It will have a office and storage room for whoever we hire as a children's coordinator and any other kind of programs that, you know, that we have come in. We've gave John a little, I think, a pretty good office space back in the corner, where he's going to be able to, to be able to work here and look all the way down here and still be able to see back this way, too. We are going to have to have a handicap bathroom. Our women's like eight, was it eight inches? Had something to do with the sink, so we gave in and left with a handicap bathroom in there. We have an area, which will be in the new area that we built, where like when you come in the door, you, on the left-hand side, you'll have the little kids, where they can sit and play with the computer, or look at books, or whatever they want. And then you'll go up over on the right a little ways, and you'll have the adults' computer area. And back behind that, there's, I don't know, four or five windows, and I like windows. So we're going to put the teens over there, and that way they will all be right there in one area where John can keep an eye on them, and where Mom can keep an eye on them, you know, if she wants to. All in all, I think that, you know, that we've done a pretty good job on it. The old floor that has been there since eons ago will be replaced along with some of the other stuff. So that will be a plus that y'all won't have to pay for. And there's a hole, not a hole, but there's a place in the roof that will be done, and that's another thing that y'all don't have to pay for. All of our citizens are going to get to pay for those. But that's pretty much, I guess. Did we decide on anything else today? And the other thing I wanted to say is, thanks, Misty, for helping us. Also, I'm understanding that you went and got your certification, so good job. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any questions for Paula before she gets set down?
I would like to say, Mayor, that you're kind of like the President, you're getting just a little more prayer all the time.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Paula. All right, up next, Paulette or Vicki?
I don't have anything exciting. Our numbers are a little bit up. The number of entries are up. Our money was down a little bit, but I was going to blame that on Vicki. She was sick.
I didn't steal it.
She didn't steal it. She was just sick. And it's a little difficult to process numbers and interdispositions and disperse money when there's only one of you doing two jobs. So we're just a little bit behind on our interdispositions, but hopefully this month is going to show that we'll be up maybe this month over what we were last year this time. So I think that's going to even itself out. Our civil cases are up three times what they were last year because we've had an increase in the amount that we can have filed in District Court now. We were limited to $5,000, and now the limit's gone to $20,000. State Legislature's trying to alleviate some of the overflow that they have at the Circuit Court level, so if we can absorb some of those minor numbers, they'll come to us, and that's what's starting to happen. But that's all I have right now. Do you have any questions?
Chief Nelson?
All right. We had 214 service calls with 33 reports taken, 122 citations, 39 arrests, which was pretty good. One warrant arrest with 16 arrests themselves. We did come across some opioid-laced gummies that they were selling. That's becoming a new thing. We did have a call hit on 49. We don't have the estimate yet, but I think that will be insured still. I think that's going to be probably $4,000 or $5,000. We're working on that. But the department has always given me a hard time. I talk too much about the training, and blah, blah, blah. So if you'll take time and just read through it, we do a lot besides just the police work. And the police are in the community. We've done several, several things at the high school with the students. And we're working on something, I'm not knowing what you guys know what it is now. I thought it was going to be moot. If we can get it passed, we're pushing forward in the school. So, any questions?
Chief Nelson, I'd like to tell you that a lot of people have expressed to me that they thank you to the police department. They've been giving, I don't know if y'all, if you have Facebook, add the police department in bad letter times. They've, some of your officers have been making announcements for people about the roads and keeping them informed on how things are in different areas, blah, blah, blah. And they really are appreciating that. I think that's a wonderful service.
We're lucky we have a lot of officers that like to listen to themselves talk, and they like to do selfies, and...
Don't be talking.
So let it be going. They've really did a job with that.
I think it does make people feel, you know, like, wonder how, you know, everybody will all do it.
I call them before I go down the market. "How's that road?"
Yeah.
And they're good to do that.
You should.
Yeah, I got it. But they're good to get out there and really watch for people.
Any questions for Chief Nelson? Thanks, Chief. Isaac?
Oh, we have a whole lot. Our treatment contract with Fayetteville's still kind of our main focus. We have got that pretty well shored up. Went before the Fayetteville's, one of the Rose Bar Committee this afternoon to be reviewed, so we should be, but I sent that to you, sorry it came late, but...
I'm about three-quarters of the way.
It's an easy reading, I know. I think we'll get that shored up, and then it'll go to the NRC for them to review, and then they'll have their comments. So we're not out of the woods just yet, but we're close. We're close to getting it, getting it where we can sign it. Nick and I are still working on the sludge removal. As our interim operating plant, sewer plant, we have now started the process to, we don't have a permit to land apply it. We have to, our permit requires us to dry it and then dispose of it in a landfill, so we're trying to get them to alter our permit a little bit so that we can land apply it. And as our, so now we did come back, and the fecal samples come back, we had where they could land apply it. So now that's our next step, is to get ADQ to maybe alter our permit so we can land apply it. Water loss was up. We had, we had leaks, about, we had seven leaks in the first 10 days of January, so it was a rough, rough start to the new year. But it was up. We're reading now. I suspect that'll be back down this month, so. Four-hour train, we're still, we're still waiting, still waiting on the rain. Our January needs a one-inch-per-hour rainfall to get the data that they need, and we just haven't got that. So, it's all good. They're, our three months has long been up. I think that what Nick said, they've built us for like 70% right now, so we still have, we've probably got another month or so before we go into another, having to pay for another month. So they are working with us. Other than that, I don't have anything else that I should have any questions.
Thanks, Isaac. Chad?
We've just been working on preparations for the season, doing sign-ups, which are coming really slow, but, or deadlines coming up, so they'll start rolling in a lot faster. Just working on the fields and the facilities for that. Been helping get the new building ready to move and help with the moving process there. So that's taken up a lot of our January. We've got a lot of other projects that are in the works, but nothing, nothing that we've got to spend a lot of time on recently. I have got a couple of flagpoles ordered, and they're, they should be on their way, and installation for those lined up. One will be at Carter Park, and then one for the new building. So hopefully in the next week to two weeks, we'll have both of those in place. And then we, we did set a, the Parks Committee at our last meeting, set a date for our Fourth of July event. It's going to be on July 3rd this year, which is a date that we usually try to do unless there's some kind of a conflict. So we are going to go forward and have it on July 3rd, and we're going to use, we've approved most of the same vendors that we used last year as far as for the fireworks and the inflatables and things like that. So we're going to look at other events that we might add to it as well, and look at other things to do as it, in the next few months, as it gets closer on how to more efficiently do our food and other things that we've been talking about, so. And as far as Parks, that's about all I've got. Jennifer Sings wanted me to mention a couple things for the Buplication Committee. They're not going to meet in February. There was some conflict with some of their, their two or three members that they have, I guess, and so they're not going to be able to meet in February. The only thing she wanted me to mention, the welcome sign, the only thing left there is the landscaping and the lighting, which they had a day in place, and Jennifer Overhill was sick that day, plus it was like one of those really brutal cold days, so they, they were looking at rescheduling that to get the landscaping stuff finished, and then that project could be finally completed. So hopefully as the weather gets a little better and they get organized, they'll be able to get that done. They've got all the stuff purchased for all the shrubs, water, planting, and the lights and all that are all purchased. They're just, Jennifer's got them, and just waiting to get them in the ground and finish that up, so. And they're, they're continuing to work on the memorial project, and that's where they're at, so. That's all I've got.
Any questions? Chad?
What, like, where are you thinking about putting that, the plaque for the...
We're looking at, probably somewhere Carter Park. It was really, I brought it to the committee just more of an idea, and I haven't, I haven't done a lot of local research on it yet to, to see what kind of a plaque or where we're going to put it or anything. I just, I took it to the committee as an idea to see if there's something they were interested, or thought it was a good idea, but, and they were all very well in favor for it. I'd like to get some more, gather some more information, and, and so, but yeah, we're looking at probably at Carter Park as well. Maybe on the building around the concession stand or something like that, where it's invisible and people will see it. So that's one of our projects that we're going to start.
Sounds so neat. It's too bad you couldn't get like a figure that even looks like the uniform, you know, like that, that much of you.
We did discuss possibly some kind of something with a picture, or, you know, so...
She has baseball cards on her cards.
Yeah, yeah, something with the...
Giving it to certain people around the area.
But it's too, you know, I mean, that'd be really cool.
Everyone had been talked about...
Chad, why don't you go ahead and explain what the...
Oh, my. Okay. There's a, there's a local resident that was, has been, as part of the, I'm going to read some of this, but her name is Mildred Earp, and she's actually from West Fork, and she played in the All-American Girls Professional Baseball League. And that entire league was entered into the Hall of Fame, the Baseball Hall of Fame, in ... Pushed down, right? Last one train thought for me. And so, it's, it's a big deal, and it's something that, as far as I know, hasn't been really recognized as a community, but we just wanted to do something, something small possibly. It's got some attention lately on Facebook and other areas, so just thought that, that the baseball park would be a good place for at least a plaque or some kind of tribute for her. So that's, again, it was just, well, it's, it's getting the idea processed right now, but, but I hopefully have a little more time to, to look at it, and we want to do it something nice and something that'll honor her and the family that she still has around here.
Maybe it's pretty humble about it.
Yes. Yes. That's my understanding, too, so. So that's, that's kind of a wrap of that.
It's exciting.
Anything else? Chief Myers?
Other than our normal one sheet, I included a sheet of paper that counts incidents by agency, just kind of shows where we stand with other departments in Orange County, kind of, that's what they ran last year. We were fed up, which is not typical, Arlington burger, Lincoln, they all three kind of run together on my call, so I put those behind me, but, so I just hope I build a little list. Interesting information. I mentioned last month that the truck in Greenland had our issues, motor issues. Talked a little bit about it. They're not in favor of putting any more money into the truck, which was probably an 81-mile truck, and it's not worth it. So it's a joy to own a truck, so as long as you guys don't have any problem with it, I'm going to think I'm going to try to start, try to pair it with Fairmark if that is, start trying to see if I can get rid of it, because it's just coming in the way, a bit of a ease for it. And we have, I think the city owns the Suburban that we have in our, in our fleet. It's a 80, mid-80 model. Kind of the same thing. It's not really a bad vehicle, we just don't use it. So I may try to see if I can get rid of both at the same time. Square body Chevy stuff's kind of a little popular right now. I'm not talking about astronomical amounts, but, you know, we might get a little bit for them, and get them out of the way, so. Other than that, we had a real busy weekend. Had a bad wreck at the interstate on Sherman Avenue. Think they ended up transporting 12 people all together in that wreck, did that in fatality, which was a sad deal. But I do want to say our guys all pulled together. I think they ended up bringing 10, 12, eight, 10, 12 people down to the fire station, getting a place to be, till somebody come pick them up, get them off the interstate. All of our people really pulled together, and it kind of scared me a little bit, they handled it without me, you know? So we, they did all pull together, did a good job, so definitely want to thank all of you, but, but I don't have anything else.
Any questions for Chief Myers? Thank you. Christie? Go ahead, Joe. Make a motion at some point tonight to allow them to dispose of that?
I don't think so. We, we passed an ordinance that basically said that they, they can do it, and they'll, they'll put together prices, and as long as it's under that specified amount, then, yeah. And they'll, they'll present a list to Christie so that she can, she can track it.
On the financial side of things, we just got through January, so the two things that I underlined on your financial sheets, that were kind of out of the ordinary on the city, general fund, the retirement, the $76,000 for one month, that is, we take all of what we paid to the city clerk retirement in January and transfer it to another account, and then it gets paid out monthly out of that account, so that's part of that. And then the payment that we paid a bunch, and Jerry's always done in January, so there's a big expense in January, but, so that will even itself out through the rest of the year. And then they have the one that's the police department on their capital outlay. They have a $28,000 expenditure in those vehicles that they purchased, so I think everything else is pretty normal. Any questions? Want to stay here?
Might as well. No questions for Christie? All right, so we'll move into old business, the update on the City Administration Building, approval of six change orders.
So, update, we're there. We are almost organized. We have a few kinks to work out with phone systems. We still don't have credit card machine or fax machine, and we're still trying to get our numbers ported from one string so that we can get completely to the new system. We have done call forwarding on our calls up there, so we do have phones up there, we're just, we still have some kinks in it. They have the signs still to put up, so that's to be here tomorrow. The windows still have to be resealed. They were supposed to be here yesterday or today, and they didn't show up, so we'll work on that, and hopefully they'll be here before Friday. For the most part, it's done. We're moved in. It looks, for the most part, organized. What doesn't look organized, you won't ever see, because it'll be hidden, but it's, it's a very pretty building. I think it adds a lot to our community. We have the grand opening, the slash, raving cutting Friday at 2:00. Be wonderful if, if as many of you could be there as possible for that. Budget-wise, I'm, I'm going to apologize, because I have not put final numbers together. We'll still, at the end of February, have some payments out and everything, but I can tell you that we are, we have come in under budget. Not by a lot, but we have come in under budget, and they finished on time, so. The change orders for January... Um, they have the signs still to put up, so that's to be here tomorrow. Um, the windows still have to be resealed, they were supposed to be here yesterday or today, they didn't show up, so we'll work on that and hopefully they'll be here before Friday. Um, for the most part, it's done, we're moved in, it looks, for the most part, organized. What doesn't look organized, you won't ever see, 'cause it'll be hidden, um, but it's, it's a very pretty building, I think it adds a lot to our community. Um, we have the grand opening, the slash, ribbon cutting Friday at two. Um, it'd be wonderful if, if as many of you could be there as possible, um, for that. Um, budget-wise, I'm, I'm gonna apologize, 'cause I have not put final numbers together, um, we'll still, at the end of February, have some payments, um, out and everything, but I can tell you that we are, we have come in under budget, um, not by a lot, but we have come in under budget and they finished on time, so. Um, the change orders for January, um, are seven hundred and fifty dollars to Super Mario. Um, we added some lentils over the windows that needed to be painted. Um, Pender Craft is, um, the cabinet company, they, there's a check writing station that was in the building when we got it, um, and it was built into the rock, so we didn't wanna pull that out and leave a big hole in the rock, so they, uh, we finished it with the laminate and everything to match the rest of the building. Um, and then we did some cabinetry changes in the water office, so that's what that fourteen hundred's for. And PC hardware, we actually got a credit for three hundred and fifteen dollars for that, um, that was for some directional signs that they had, uh, for the interior of the building that we told them we weren't interested in. Um, DNW, uh, came out and did the framework for the sign, uh, which is there without the sign, um, and then best sign, uh, nineteen hundred dollars there, that's for the actual sign itself, so, um, those are the change orders that we have, that we need to, uh, do a motion to accept those change orders for January, if we can do that.
We'll look at it. So when it's all said and done, reconciled, we still have a little under seventeen hundred dollars?
Um, as of January thirty-first, we had sixteen hundred dollars left in contingency. Um, I think off the top of my head, Joe would spend about seven hundred and fifty of that, um, so we have some contingency, a little bit of contingency left and, and that may fluctuate with the final, uh, numbers. There was some stuff that Cameron felt I would probably come off of, some of the, uh, contract manager's stuff, so I'm not sure where that's gonna end up, but we are gonna end up under budget a little bit. So, and we still, there's also, was additional money from what fall down the shell's budget was, to what that loan was, there's some additional money left in there too. We've used, we've used quite a bit of that for furniture and other things that we needed for the building, but we, altogether, we will be under the three hundred thousand overall budget also. Um, that's it.
Any questions, I mean? Do we have a motion?
You do. I make a motion.
So we have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay. To approve the change orders for the administration building? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
So suppose they no, motion carries. It's our new business. Ordnance four sixty-eight, establishing fixed asset policy.
And, so we're required by law, uh, largely what it requires is to keep a fixed asset, um, list, um, and I will say that I've been very remiss at keeping that well organized, and part of that is because we've not had any guidelines of what was a fixed asset as far as the amount, um, so really what I've kept, for lack of better words, is a inventory list. Um, so we have a lot of things on there, like weed eaters and stuff like that, that change regularly, um, so it's made that list almost impossible to keep up and keep current. Um, so basically what I'm asking is for you guys to approve this ordinance that will set a two thousand dollar limit, so anything over two thousand dollars and, uh, have at least two years' use on it would be what we will keep in our fax, fixed asset list.
So everything else be regarded as like a consumable?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make that motion?
It's an ordinance, so we need to suspend the rules and...
That's the motion that you missed about that. So, do we have a motion to suspend the rules? Read the panel, is that right? Is that right?
I'll make the motion, suspend the rules.
Motion is...
Second.
So all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowry?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmoyne?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Okay.
That passed, and may I read the title of the ordinance, establishing policy defining fixed assets to the city of West Fork, and I think Joe will make a motion to pass.
Are there any questions about it, Lloyd?
Make a statement.
Yes. I make a motion. She's one second.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, you know the syllabus, you have one more real call. Alright, Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowry?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmoyne?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
And Joe Teller?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Alright, moving on. We've discussed during our budget, uh, meeting about visiting, uh, revisiting resolution two thousand and ten dash zero seven, uh, the contribution to Jerry Spillers and Bush Bethelnew's retirement. Uh, we have that resolution in our packet, um, where it spells out what the city did. Um, and I think it spells out why, and, and we've had some discussion about why, and we can have that discussion again, uh, as to why we, we did pass that, what, what our thoughts were at that time. Um, you also have in your packet, uh, a computation worksheet that shows where the city contacted, uh, the state to, to get the, the amount that it would take to, to buy back these retirements, had the city provided it during that period. Um, and so, on that computation sheet, uh, there's a, a line item for what the employer would have contributed, what the city would have contributed, had the city been paying during that time. Um, and there's, there's one of those for, for each, uh, Bush and Jerry. And so, are there any questions regarding this, regarding that computation? Do we remember having that discussion at the budget meeting? You guys are kind of clapping.
We do.
Okay.
And, uh, as far as discussion, I, I think that, um, as I stated before, I think it would be honorable to carry through on the commitment that was made at that time. So reading this, is it a five thousand dollar annual disbursement per man?
Per man. And so, you can look at that and see that, uh, Christie marked on there, we've, uh, paid it for eight years, five thousand a piece. Is that right?
Yes, plus this year.
Plus this year.
And this is going to sound really cold-hearted and I apologize, now I may come across this way, but if you think about, you know, what actuarial table, you think about how much longer this would continue to be, I would think it would be honorable to uphold this commitment, given the nature of the service. I mean, and I will ask, Isaac, how many times after dark did they go out this last month?
Several.
And that probably is the same in the past. And one of the, I'm standing on the small soapbox, I'm fortunate, I'm well-employed. We get really, really good wages compared to some municipal employees. Our hours are better, we don't work at the beck and call when someone loses service. I typically don't get called, but they do, you know, there, there always have to be, but, um, my personal opinion, we should carry through on this commitment.
So to date, they've been paid forty-five thousand dollars each? I just wanna go on record, I was against it from the start and I've been against it every day since, I'm still...
And so if we, if we look at that, Mr., uh, the employer contributions, um, at the most, the employer would have contributed forty-seven thousand for, for one of the employees and twenty-seven for the other, if we've been making those contributions since the beginning.
And the reason why is because when they were hired, they knew they were not getting it. So, that's my reason.
Any other thoughts?
And they worked all those years knowing that they weren't getting it, and they had no problem with it. And these going, you know, after I was called, they're getting paid for that. So like they're volunteering to go in at midnight, they're getting paid, so...
I can't believe it wasn't put in a trust or something that draws interest, and then when they retire, Jerry, that's what I can't get over. I mean, Jerry's not retired, but he gets five thousand a year retirement to spend or do whatever he wants to do with it. I, I can't believe it wasn't put in a bond, you know, a CD or something that draws interest, to make money on it and then give it to anyone who retires. But that's money he's been using since oh-nine, you know?
Any other discussion?
When we said we're doing it exactly?
So we haven't said we're gonna do anything exactly, I thought it was something that we need to, to discuss. Uh, I personally do not like the fact that it, it runs for the life. I don't think that should have ever been made. That's my opinion. Uh, and furthermore, it's, it's ten thousand a year that the city is paying, um, uh, for this retirement that, that at the time was not offered. I mean, that's, that's kind of where I go back to, it wasn't like, I mean, the city, it wasn't like the city did wrong by them, um, this, this plan wasn't established with this way at the time, right? Uh, so, that's my concern. We have that ten thousand dollars, that, of taxpayer money, that, you know, is it being allocated appropriately? And I think where I really come down on it is the, the amount the employers would have contributed, had we been providing it this entire time, um, and for life.
I agree.
That is a, that is a long, open-ended period of time.
I'll make a point about actuarial table again. Yes, I agree that there are better things to do with that money, but if you rescind this, what, what commitments do we make now that are, can be rescinded in eight or ten years from now? I'm not sure if I'm gonna change the move.
I think every resolution that we pass can be, can be changed in eight or ten years or, or next month, if, if we decided that, that we've made it and, and maybe we should, you know, should look at revising it. So I, I, I see your point, Joe, don't get me wrong, I do see your point, um, but I think also, you know, one of those employees is no longer an employee, um, and so I think we, and I think that's a very valid reason to be revisiting this, uh, we have someone that, you know, I wasn't here, uh, when he left, uh, and, and I would consider Bush a friend, and don't get me wrong, uh, it may not be after I brought this up, but, uh, I, in my heart, I don't have malice against either employee, but, but I think the reality is, he isn't an employee, uh, and we're still, uh, on the hook to, to pay a retirement that wasn't offered originally for the rest of his life.
Well, and I'll ask again, out of, I'm not sure I entirely understand, why was it offered at the time it was offered?
Well, the state's required it at that point.
Okay. I'm sorry, well, public employees could be in APERS starting at that point, they had to be in some retirement system. Am I correct, both employees are enrolled in APERS from the day APERS began?
When the city joined APERS?
This is, this is absolutely nothing more than a gift, this is not retirement. Both employees are in the mandatory retirement system, both have maxed out in that system. In other words, this amount could not have added to that system. The system requires years of service at some contribution or none, depending on what the city sets up, I don't know what the contribution was for these two employees.
At that time, it was very...
But I just wanna make sure, this is not retirement, this is just a gift to say, if, if the states would have been available going back to the seventies, then we would have joined it, so here's some money, that's what this is, not retirement. Because, because it can't be, the retirement, you're not allowed to have local retirement anymore, it's not permitted. So the retirement system is APERS, it's the public one retirement system, and I, I just wanna make sure that they're both in it, I mean...
Yeah.
Okay, so they're both in it, they both maxed out. They've had as many years as you can, if, if, other worry about us, every year that adds on is not adding to their, they are at the highest level of, uh, of drawing now. When they retire, they'll both get, is it ninety percent, ninety or a hundred percent? They're either ninety or a hundred percent of their salary when they retire.
And just so everyone knows, I have, uh, spoke with Jerry about this, uh, before bringing it to a council meeting. So he knows that he, obviously, this could go, you know, many different ways, but, but I have spoke with Jerry, so that it's not gonna be a surprise, uh, that, that we're talking about it. And along those same lines, uh, that payment goes out in, in January. Uh, we did not change anything in the budget for this, and I intentionally did not want this on the agenda until February. So if there's changes made, it's a year, there's a, there's a year notice before there's not a change.
And why in two thousand, just remind me then how it started in two thousand nine, like what brought it about? Well, Jan was the mayor and Anita was on here, so they could probably answer that.
There was a couple of things, I think, one of them was somebody wanted, that quit. Well, I just, I don't, I didn't vote, I abstained, but, um, I think I brought this up that someone left the city that didn't, that filed a suit of, was wanting money in the state yet, for some different things. I don't know that, that, I just know it came about and it was voted on, so. And there's just different things that's, you know, I, I don't know, there was things told, there was, I don't know, Christie's tried to explain the best she can, because I don't know. I know what was brought up and it's passed. But like I said, I was...
Well, I have more of a problem with the current employee, I do think rescinding it...
Yes.
Than I do. Look.
But the city was never at a war, so you're just giving free money, the taxpayers' money, just free to support, over what we would have given them, over what we would have contributed. I mean, this is just like, right, we're just gonna pick out anybody for any random reason and just start getting them a check?
Hmm, was that the metric at the time? Could have had something to do with two long-term, you know, a department head and a long-term critical employee, and I'm not, I'm not poking holes in it, I'm just saying, I don't...
I'm probably getting some of the thing that came years later, it seems like that's the version we're bringing up, but, not in two thousand nine.
Certainly, this sentiment wasn't present, free money, or yes, just because at the time, or it wouldn't have passed, and I'm, I'm trying, I wouldn't hear it. I'm struggling to understand.
Well, and I think, I think if we look at this and I think, I think it's easy to see that there is an emotional, uh, side to this, uh, you know, two long-term employees, very valuable employees, uh, who have not been, uh, who have, who have no retirement plan in place. And, and the city made a, a gracious, uh, you know, attempt to, to make up for, you know, what they felt was, was a pass wrong, but I think we need to revisit it, certainly for entirety of life. Yeah, absolutely.
What time did you guys join, what year did you join APERS? Was it ninety-two?
Yes, early nineties.
So they, they had, they had APERS retirement beginning of nineteen ninety-two?
Yes, yes, yes. This is only, we're, we're trying to make up for what happened between... This is only, we're, we're trying to make up for what happened between nineteen seventy-one and nineteen ninety-two. That's what this was to make up for.
APERS is based on this, you are paid based on your highest, the kind of average wage, and based on number of years you served, and that year, those number of years max out at either twenty-five or twenty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
So had you been started back in the sixties, after twenty-eight, it doesn't matter how many more years you're in, it just matters what you make at the end, I mean, your salary. So, in other words, you're not adding, you couldn't add to, unless they would've retired prior to today, I mean, in, in other words, what I'm saying is mathematically, you didn't add to the, um, to the retirement.
Retirement, yes.
Benefit, the retirement benefit maxes out in a certain number of years in, in APERS. I don't know if it's twenty-five or twenty-eight, so.
Well, at the time, it was done to help him catch up for a period, if there was. But I don't think that, what, uh, what the attorney's saying was necessarily understood at that time. So even, even though we're paying to catch up for their retirement, is gonna, their check is gonna be the same.
Actually, I think you hit it right on the nose, it was meant to catch up, these two employees.
Right.
And it was not, it was supposed to, at one point, it was gonna be capped, and I don't really, I mean, I know that should've been revisited, really. But that's, the sentiment was, the sentiment was, they were the, the two that were left out of retirement, basically, for all the long-term employees. And we were going to look at, the council wanted to look at bringing them more up-to-date, which everybody felt like was only the right thing to do because of the dedication and the years of service and the things that were given at the time. Not everything.
Even if you took this money away, never give them a dime, they would be making the same as if they paid in the whole time.
See, that's.
They're making the same money as.
I do grasp that, thank you. Okay, so then we shouldn't be paying anything? This has been a, a loss of ninety thousand dollars? We've caught up the loss.
But we're making up for what?
But they're still gonna get the same check at the end.
Yeah.
Fine. No, that's not what it was, not how it was at the time, that's not what.
Well, both of them made it the time they needed, so.
Right.
Well, in the benefit of hindsight, now we understand, oh, best is the long term, but it's matured, they're gonna get ninety percent of their final, what, three-year salary? Or the highest?
I don't know, it's the highest year of the last three years.
Yeah, the highest.
So that would be the highest.
Okay. So now we know that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we didn't know that at the time. And I take your point, and yours as well. I, again, I, I have a problem with the current employee and rescinding it, but wisdom is knowing what you've done might not be the best thing, and having the courage to go back and address it. So Joe, would you, would you, uh, agree to, if we, if we continued Jerry's until a point he retired?
I'm against that also.
Yeah, they're still gonna get that same check. More than paid your contribution. Yes. Plus, nobody's supposed to get retirement before retirement.
He's getting, he's getting the same amount if we wouldn't give him a dime.
It, it, it exists, and again. It's basically compensation, Christie is what it is. It's basically compensation.
Yes.
I think to, maybe even protect Jerry, IRS-wise, maybe wise to start calling compensation.
Oh, make it tonight.
Okay, 'cause that's what it basically is. In other words, you could look at it with this compensation instead of as retirement. It's basically, well, no, it's basically built into its compensation at some point, these two gentlemen got these raises, you know, and, and one of them no longer works for you, but one of them still does.
I make your motion, at this point, that we rescind the entire thing, and Resolution Number Twenty-Ten dash oh seven.
We have a motion on the table, okay?
And that would require a resolution there, you have to write a resolution to do that.
Okay.
And I can, I can write one if you guys dictate one now, but you could also say, put that on the agenda if you, if we, if we pass it. You could, you could say, hey, let's take that motion, Mr. Cottle, say, okay, I want Tom to write that resolution and bring it.
I want Tom to write that resolution, bring it next month.
But there may be another, you might, you might have another solution proposed by somebody else, if it doesn't get voted, so, basically, maybe you wanna make the motion to have me do that, and then see if that passes.
Yes, I would like to make the motion to have you write a resolution to rescind the Resolution Number Twenty-Ten dash oh seven, because in my mind.
That covers both of them?
Is, is that gonna cover both?
Yeah.
Cover both, yes, both of them, they're both on there, let's see.
If that passes, then we'll do that, but if it doesn't, maybe someone else will have a motion, okay?
So we have a motion, in second? Do we need, can we do all in favor, or do we need a roll call on that?
We could try all in favor.
Let's do, let's do a roll call.
Does Jerry understand that that amount has been paid, the total amount? Has this been discussed again? What we would've paid. Yeah, what we would have paid, he's actually received a little more than what we would have paid, is he not there?
That has been explained to Jerry, uh, and Jerry was very gracious about it. I can, I can tell you that if somebody explained that to me, and was gonna take money out of my pocket every month, I would've handled it a lot different than Jerry did, I can tell you that. What, am I under your definition? It probably would have. So we have a motion in second? Uh, to, has the city attorney write up a resolution to resolve, dissolve, is Resolution Twenty-Ten dash zero seven? So we'll take a vote on that. Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowery?
Abstained.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorton?
Yes, we've paid him back, we've paid Jerry the more than the amount that he would've lost, so if he understands that.
John Collins?
Yes.
Tara Hungate?
Yes.
Joe Teller?
Yes.
Put on the agenda, we're gonna do this. All in favor, motion carries. So that will be on our next city council meeting. We also have a resolution. Your business, your business here. Yeah. All right, up next, approve additions to the police department policy and procedures. So that will be on next, and we'll vote on that, approve it. Okay, Chief Nelson?
Just a little bit of background on it, we have kind of a unique situation here. Officer Underwood has authored to use his GI Bill to purchase a, a police cannon, to drug dog owner, it's not a white dog. They paid for the dog, they paid for one hundred percent of his training.
Initial training, correct?
Finish. The rest will be free, we've discussed time.
Yeah.
We can work time out. The initial cost, we would never, we can't come up with ten thousand dollars for training and, and cost the dogs and all the stuffs. The other stuff, we've been working with, uh, the mayor's, mayor? Matthews. Matthews, sorry. Excuse me, we've been working with Matthews, they give us food at cost, the vet also, so he would give us a very good discount, so pretty much the police department would be there, feeding that dog.
Chief, I've done it too far off in the weeds, but one small question, what's the difference between a drug dog and a white dog?
A whole bunch. A whole bunch, and a whole bunch of wild dogs.
Okay. Me, I'm the difference.
A white dog is trained in the back, a drug dog is not trained in the back.
It doesn't, it's not aggressive.
It's not an aggressive dog.
White dogs are named Cujo and Hitler. Yes, whereas drug dogs are named Muffet and Daisy.
Yeah, true.
That's the difference. So lower certifications, lower.
Well, he had the option to go either way, but I don't like the responsibility of a drug, of a white dog. There's a lot of responsibility comes with that, and a lot of lie, though. Uh, just for a tracking and a drug dog, they don't guarantee what kind of dog it'll be, but I guarantee it won't be German Shepherd. Ninety percent sure of what they use, it's gonna be a lie, I would sooner along those lines, type dog. I believe we have the money, I think I have it in my miseries, I think I also have it in my, uh, my equipment, but in my supplies, we have more than enough to cover. I'm assuming that these kids are already excited, wanna do some research, to get it fast, some of those things. I think it can be a good program. If it's not, and something goes down with it, you know, something goes wrong, you can't afford it, the dog will return to Officer Underwood, and, uh, and he'll be able to retire or keep the dog, or do what he wants with the dog. I can set it that way, I feel it's right to take a ten thousand dollar investment and say, well, now that's ours. So, the policy, as far as getting the policy passed, it's directly in line with who will return, it's directly in line with New York's Art and Zals, minus the bike and minus the, they have all, all long dogs. That's about thirty thousand dollar investment, so. But everything else, is there any questions on the policy board, or is the policy very standard?
Officer Underwood, does anything you'd like to add to this?
Things covered it all. Training was done in San Antonio, Texas, for two weeks, ninety-six hours complete, eighty hours for the drug protection, and sixty hours for the nutrition training. And like I said, a hundred percent is covered by the GI Bill, including the hotel stay and, and the training. So, we don't, we don't know what type of dog it's gonna be just yet, company won't tell us, they won't let me down there. They, they ruled out German Shepherd and Malvol, pretty much because those are the two breeds, I mean, it's for white dogs, for other dogs. But, like, chief, I don't want a lot of zapping in the white dog, I don't like the dress of my lung, something that I can take to the school, and as friendly as you had it from home, so, that's about it.
And you're willing to use your GI Bill from active insurance, you do this?
It's already approved in New York.
Any questions for me? And you're gonna stay in the pickup?
Yes.
Are you gonna take the backseat out?
Uh, we actually had done right here in town, like a metal bed, to go over the seat, it's actually currently in.
Well, because the bad thing, if you get a lab, is the hip dis方位 jumping that high every time.
Right.
And if you're on twelve-hour shifts, are you gonna work the dog twelve hours?
Uh, there could be some days that I don't, uh, just to keep the hours down on him, I just get in a feel for it, when we get back here, on the demand and everything, just seeing at home, how it working, to make sure of the benefit of him staying healthy and staying loose for a while.
'Cause that, I mean, that's bad with labs, getting as long as you jump them.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to lift him in the truck.
So it's not gonna be a score?
Well, they won't do it, it could be a lot.
They're buyers, though.
I'm hoping it's a lab, that's whose mind first thought.
Thank you, sir, I don't know what to say, thank you. Yes, very commendable.
So is it the appropriate time to make a motion? I think so, if there, are there, is there any other discussion?
Now you can hear your wife on both of you.
Then I will make a motion to change police, um, department procedures to allow this.
Thank you.
We have a motion in second? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, then no, motion carries. And what I would like to see in the packet is your activity.
Well, he has to keep report on all those activities, I wanna see this work, I want this program to be, I want to make contact, and.
I'll be in sunny areas of San Antonio, and it'll be two, four weeks. And once I get back off, then certify the state market.
Which is gonna be done for free. Well, no, you gotta hold this, and who's gonna certify it, I don't know, so, predict the national certify, we can start, but we're not gonna have to pay that, that'll be free.
Very good. Thank you, guys, thank you, Officer Underwood. When you give me those disparaging awards like you did, that's when I get the opportunity to get you up in front of the entire council. All right, mayor's comments. Mr. Cottle, congratulations, completion of, for municipal league certification, thank you very much. I would encourage everyone to, uh, try to attend those, and, uh, to use those same certifications. That's all I had. Oh, that was not. Back that truck up. So we have a stated the city, uh, for twenty seventeen. I guess we go ahead and read it, and Christie will put it on the website. So, twenty seventeen in West Fork witnessed many exciting changes and advancements across all departments. Citizens should be comforted by the stewardship of the department heads and city council. In twenty seventeen, the city saw revenues increase beyond budgeted amounts across all departments, a true sign of growth. Through careful management led by the city treasurer and department heads, the city also came in under budget by roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. While coming in under budget, the city still completed many projects. The Parks Department and Economics and Beautification Committee partnered to erect a wonderful welcome to West Fork sign near the I-49 on Rand. Public Works completed a long-needed sidewalk connection on McKnight Street, oversaw the rehabilitation of sewer infrastructure and street overlay in West Fork Acres, and began the installation of digital water meters in the city. The West Fork Fire Department constructed a training tower next to the fire station. The police department has added twenty-four-seven police patrol and has implemented many valuable community policing programs typically only found in cities much larger than ours. Our court and library departments are diligently planning for major changes and growth in the very near future. Other noteworthy changes in twenty seventeen include a slight increase in new home construction permanence issue, the addition of curbside recycling, increased recycle center hours of operation, and the completion of the new city administration building located at one sixty-four North Centennial. Through these and many other accomplishments, the city of West Fork is very much transitioning itself for a healthy and robust future. I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I missed that most, I was like that.
Motion in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, motion carries.